So, we can start streaming Channel 18, please. Good evening or good afternoon. This is the semi-virtual Board of Selectmen meeting for Friday, June 5th, 2020. At this time, all participants will be muted and the meeting will be closed to new attendees, as indicated on today's agenda and currently on Channel 18. We will be inviting people for public comment. To get in line to speak, you must send an email to comment@town.harwich.ma.us. At the time of public comment, those emails will be taken in the order. They were received. They may be sent at any time. Mr. Ballantyne, meeting is yours.
Thank you, Scott. I'd like to open this special Board of Selectmen's meeting for June 5th, 2020. And just as a side note, this is a special meeting for us to discuss the approval process utilized by Board of Selectmen response for request for expansion of outdoor table service. We'll go into detail, but our purpose is to work closely with the health, safety. We're getting feedbacks on our businesses. I'll start by a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we start on that, before we start on that business, Joe, you had a couple announcements that you wish to make?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm sure you and your colleagues may want to add additional comments, but we're all obviously very aware of the difficult time that our nation is experiencing right now as it relates to issues of race, social justice, and
Unmuted.
And, you know, there are a number of things happening around the nation and things that we know have occurred in the Commonwealth. On the screen there is a map detailing, as we know, there was an effort by some of our best and brightest youth to engage in a civic dialogue and discussion with a rally. It was advertised earlier in the week on social media. As these things tend to do, it sort of takes on a life of its own, and the young students and their parents had concerns and were looking to then cancel. As we know, there's still an effort to continue on that, so there's several things that I want to enlighten the board and through you to the public in general. Throughout this entire week, I have worked with Chief Gilmet, and Chief Gilmet's team has worked with any number of individuals who are very much interested in trying to affect social change and march and be heard. At no point in time has the town of Harwich through staff or the public safety divisions said no to anything. In fact, I am very much heartened by the collaborative spirit and the dialogue that has happened throughout this week, and I would say personally that I think that is what needs to continue on more often, is collaborative discussions and dialogues where we all can try to come to some general consensus of our community and our way of life. The map that you see on the screen is a recommendation for anyone that is looking to come to the town of Harwich on Saturday, June 6th, for the purposes of rallying, whether it's for social justice, whether it's related to the unconscionable death of Mr. Floyd, in support of Black Lives and Black Lives Matters, Black Lives Matter, excuse me, or in any other. The town of Harwich and the Public Safety Department have, as I said, worked collaboratively to establish a rally and march through the center of our town, the heart of our town, and the seat of government of our town, and also utilized what I understand as a resident to be a very significant and appropriate place for public gatherings, being Brooks Park and use of the gazebo. So I just wanted to put it out there that there is a suggested route, and the town of Harwich continues to partner with anyone who has been moved by and desires to be heard on Saturday. Mr. Chairman, I have a separate item, but related to really what's happening in the world today, if you want me to get into that, or unless the board wanted to.
Let's come in on the march first.
Certainly.
My only comment is that the march does make me nervous. We've seen other communities where it started off as a peaceful march and then it's quickly gone south, and I'm very hopeful, and like Joe, you said, that they've been working with our police and the safety department. But I've gotten a number of calls of folks being nervous just because of what they see on TV. I've heard rumors of even bricks being stockpiled at various places. Now, if this were only Harwich residents, I'd feel comfortable. There'd be zero concern. My concern is if someone comes in from outside. So I certainly encourage everyone to keep this orderly and peaceful, work with our public safety, and I'm hoping they'll use the guidance you have for the routes to help give our police a chance. There's an outside chance that this could take place on this route and also take place on Route 28, which would be really difficult for our police to handle. And so I have some concerns. You know, we obviously have no choice, nor do we want to prevent anyone from peaceful protest, making their views known. That's not my suggestion. I'm just hoping that people will be mindful of their neighbors and respectful of the town and the police. I'll take any other comments. Steve?
Yeah, I have faith, and I've spoken with a few people that are involved. I know that my colleague, Ed McManus, is involved, and the involvement of the parents and some other folks after the initial idea of this, I think is a good thing. It'll help to keep it more organized and safer. I have a lot of respect for the kids that began this process. The only thing that I would say, and I'm more worried about than anything, is make sure you wear a mask, make sure you distance. This is a cause that is well worth turning out for, but please, 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 think about your own personal health and the health of your parents and your brothers and sisters and your grandparents, because that's where, I don't, you know, and maybe I'm being too optimistic, but I don't see a situation where we will have, you know, any kind of a violent interlude in the middle of this thing. I know that Joe has said the police chief and the department as a whole have been very involved, which is very heartening to me, because from the very beginning, they've been involved, and they've spoken with the organizers, and I think that's so important. But just remember your own health. That's the big thing. And I am very proud of these kids for coming up and speaking on all of this.
Okay, Ed?
Yeah, as Steve indicated, given the times this is happening in the maintaining a healthy set of activities, we're requiring people to, to the extent we can, require people to have, wear face masks, to keep their distance. On the march, it will be a silent march without chanting, et cetera, which is sort of one of the ways people, any virus could spread. And in the park itself, we'll be using the gazebo and sound system there, so we're not having people shouting out and whatnot in making their statements. So we're doing all the things we can know of to keep this, I'm not sure, what's the proper term, this socially-distanced, healthy event?
I'd like to make one last comment, if I may. I do want to set the record straight. I've had at least one phone call that said that two of us had authorized this march. We don't authorize marches as Board of Selectmen. I know we've, two of us said they supported it, but that is completely incorrect. We don't, we don't, that's not our role nor our authority, so I do want to set that record straight.
Thank you.
Thank you for that comment, Mr. Chairman. You're absolutely right. The town has done nothing to thwart efforts nor to engage efforts. We merely are there to facilitate what we hope to be a very peaceful and impactful event for everybody involved. In line with that, and indicative of a lot of the emails I've been dealing with this week, there are a number of individuals who have complained about what I will refer to as banners, and I do that in the sense of my understanding of United States code as it relates to the flag of the United States of America. As you all on the board may know, center field at Centio Baldwin Field prominently, preeminently, and soaring above all others is our flag of the United States of America. What you may not be aware of is on either, and I'm not sure which is which, but left field and right field, there are what I would refer to as banners, because they are not under the code, flags of the United States of America, but you would know them as flags that demonstrate a blue line and flags that demonstrate a red line. And those have been in place at that location for several years. It's my understanding that Monomoy Little League, which has exclusive use of the lands and the property there, as granted by the town, continue to have those flags present, and I have been asked to remove them, and it's my position that the use of that property by Monomoy Little League is appropriate. If the flag of the United States were not prominent or preeminent, I would have an issue with that, but at this time, I am not going to be directing staff or anyone to take the steps of removing those two flags. If this is something that the board wants me to reconsider or have a further discussion, I'm certainly open to that, but I was waiting for this opportunity to bring the board up to date and to communicate to the general public. I know there are those that see symbolism in those banners. I don't, but more importantly, those banners have been there for years. Those banners were recently replaced only because of the condition in which they were in, and they were restored prior to Peace Officer Memorial Day, which is what I understand many of the proponents of those banners, that is their use and their purpose. So I want you on the board and the general public to know that I and staff obviously are very aware of the high feelings, and everyone is perhaps on edge, and there's a lot going on, but I think the town of Harwich, and I mean that as far as the residents, we may have disagreements about symbolisms and statements and all of that, but I think that sum total of those two events or those two actions this week demonstrate that the town of Harwich as a government takes no position on either side, but continues to support the rights of its citizenry to express themselves, as is their rights under the U.S. Constitution.
Thank you, Joe. Does anyone disagree with position of the town administrator? I don't. No. I see people shaking their heads no, so we appreciate the information, Joe, and your position.
Thank you. So with that, I will share the screen and go on to the meeting, if I may.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure, Michael.
Joe, can you just tell the public what time the rally starts tomorrow, or Ed for that matter? What the timeframe is?
Two o'clock.
Till?
We're assuming a little speaking program of about 20 minutes, and then however long it takes to walk basically around the block.
And then back to the park for gathering, and is there a?
Back to the park for dispersal.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael and Ed. Joe, we'll
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what you will have seen in your packet is, as we discussed Monday evening, is a memorandum from me to the board. The Health Director and I have been, as you would imagine, quite busy reacting to Governor Baker's Order Number 35 relative to Phase 2, which can begin, we anticipate, as early as Monday, June 8th. And of course, the major component of that is the outdoor table service of food and beverage, including alcohol, service. So you have my memorandum, which would outline my proposal. I'll come back to that in a moment. You would also see in the packet Governor Baker's Order Number 35, and I'm just going to speed through that for a moment, just to show that what we're really dealing with is Section 4 of Order Number 35, which is the preparation and accommodations for our outdoor restaurant dining service. You'll see within that document, there is a legal definition of what is understood to be outdoor table service, and we've incorporated that in all of our materials. Continuing on in the packet, you will see the exceedingly well-developed and informative PowerPoint presentation that was put together by our Health Director on very short notice. Megan and I, along with Cindy Williams, who we have on the call as well today, as well as Chairman Ballantyne, were able to participate in a call on Wednesday, June 3rd. Megan had already taken the initiative to set that call up in anticipation, so it was very well timed, I think, and I think all involved were very appreciative. So we met with more than 30 restaurants, which is out of roughly 65 establishments in Harwich. We went over the PowerPoint that you see in your packet, and we also, because the PowerPoint dealt predominantly with table service regardless of alcohol, you can see there was one slide relative to the ABCC. So in addition to that, we have included in the packet the ABCC guidance and directives on the steps that will need to take place on the request for extension of service and table service and of liquor service. And then you will see the guidelines. So the Guidelines for Extension of Premises to Patio and Outdoor Areas is a document that dates back to 2015. It is not unique to this endeavor and this pandemic. However, every element on that document is required of the town to insist upon to the establishments, and I emphasize that, just so that we'll come back to that in a moment. And then what you'll see in the packet and what I'm trying to show on the screen is one of the things I want to emphasize is I have been, I've tried to be very mindful of this board and your directive to me and to staff to do everything and anything possible to expedite the approval process in support of our businesses, because we all know too well how drastically they've been impacted. And what I'm suggesting is there's not even, as far as bureaucracy and red tape go, there's not even a form that they are required to fill out. What there is, is this checklist that staff will fill out on their behalf, so I offer that as a sincere gesture of staff doing everything we can to expedite. But I want to spend a moment to show you that request for expansion of table, outdoor table service, those three components, because those components also will impact upon liquor service. So any establishment wishing to implement outdoor seating outside of their building envelope, and that goes back to the definition. So this would be an establishment that may already have outdoor seating, if they want to go beyond what they've already been established, or they don't presently have outdoor seating of any sort. What we're asking for, and again, it ties back to state requirements, is a two-scale drawing of the property, showing the location of table chairs and any barriers proposed. And we've emphasized, and Mr. Chairman, as you've said on the call to the businesses to please work with us, what we can't accept, what we cannot accept, is a rudimentary drawing on graph paper or pencil drawing. They do need to avail themselves of some sort of two-scale drawing, and that's because we would, even though there's no oversight by the ABCC to your approval process, there is still ABCC oversight, as well as just the state expecting us to have a two-scale drawing. So that is possibly going to be the only sticking point, but I think it's one that could be ameliorated in very short order. Again, indicate the number of seats you're proposing, including any carryout service, waiting areas, and maximum occupancy, and then just proof that you have the permission of the property owner, if you are not, to expand beyond your building envelope. And that's a requirement that ties back to the ABCC for alcohol service, recognizing that, I think it's the preponderance of businesses, would be impacted by beer, wine, or other alcohol service. So if there was a, one area where we would have to insist upon, I would suggest that it would simply be the two-scale drawing. Mr. Chairman and members, I'd like to now just bring it back to the memorandum you see in your packet, and so, well, before that, let me just make sure I go through all my notes to make sure I've covered everything. I mentioned the meeting on June 3rd. Any establishments that were able to participate, the PowerPoint documents, as well as the video, we recorded the call, just like this one's being recorded, are available on the town's website. So anyone that was not participating, we would ask them to see that first, and then certainly reach out to Megan and I, as they've been doing. Tied into this, this morning, the Board of Health voted unanimously to adopt the workplace safety standards promulgated by the Commonwealth. The Board of Health unanimously adopted those safety standards for restaurants as now regulation of the town of Harwich, and that was a necessary step, and I know in a moment Megan could speak to that if the board is interested in how that came about today. I also want to emphasize that the calls that Megan and/or I have participated this week, we do understand that indoor table service is anticipated to start within this month and within Phase 2, and it could be as soon as two weeks. This effort is not thwarted or negated by indoor service. It would just be an establishment allowing to do indoor and outdoor service if they choose. So I don't want anyone to think that they should hold off on outdoor, because indoor will resume, because indoor and outdoor will give them the greatest ability to impact upon their revenue and with their customers. Two other quick notes, real quick. Because we don't know the approval process yet, you will have seen the agenda that was posted for Monday, June 8th. We have 15 establishments that notified us before agenda deadline, so those 15 establishments, where the board to be the approvers of that, could be in position to be approved and to go into effect on June 9th. However, we've already come across an establishment that notified us today, and I don't believe we can add them legally, because it's not an unanticipated event, and we also don't know if they're going to have all the paperwork. So I will make an argument to my proposal. Last but not least, I know this has come up before, and Mr. Chairman, I've mentioned it to you, and I apologize, there was a question regarding an application or request by the operator of the dockside establishment for a canopy. That request came in through staff in late January, and that request was withdrawn by the applicant in early March, and I think wisely so, because the town engineer and I were able to have conversations with him, and this is before pandemic, so there is no expectation of a canopy anywhere around the establishment known as the Dockside Snack Shack. So I'll just throw that out there. So lastly, what I will say is, in my memo to you on the second page, I offer you a recommendation, and I also offer a qualification. So I am recommending that you name me as staff on your behalf to approve, because if you were to do that, we can begin the process immediately after this meeting. There are at least four, excuse me, two establishments, possibly four, that if we go with that and we hear Governor Baker say that Phase 2 is in effect on Monday, those establishments will be able to be in operation for outdoor service as early as Monday. If the board were looking to do it, it would be no earlier than Tuesday. However, I wanted to put out there the options of you directing me to do it, the board doing it, or any other staff member. But if asked, my recommendation is that you redirect this to me, because I can work with staff and we can begin immediately. I believe I've covered everything, Mr. Chairman, so I'm just going to yield at this point.
Just a very brief comment. Megan did an excellent job, and Joe's involved as well, presenting this to the restaurant and giving some details. I think there's some feeling that sometimes the governor's recommendations leave some wiggle room and not as great clarity, so help that. In terms of the scale drawing, Megan was very encouraging about this does not have to be an engineer drawing, it's a, Megan, you'll stop me by speaking out of school here, but looking for, to scale, but on graph paper, that people can very carefully measure the distances and present that. I also see that Cindy's on the, joined us from the chamber, and she graciously also helped, offered to help any businesses that needed help putting a drawing together, so we can get a detailed in the drawing that we can look at. And that's, so that gives us a step up as well, I think, because that's a critical thing we have to do. Questions, comments for Joe Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just need a kind of clarification on that, the form, the third part of it. I thought we were going to pursue the possibility of some road closure. There's no way for them to answer that question at that point, because
I'll let Joe answer that, but I'm not sure we're there yet, but Joe, go ahead.
No, thank you for that. What I did state on the meeting was, if there was any establishment that wanted to rely upon town or state roadway, to include that in their narrative, and I thank you, I have a significant update on that, so we're looking for the establishments to say whether or not they need that. Having said that, as you would imagine with any topic of this sensitive nature, there's any number of opinions as to whether or not one-way closure or any of that is good, bad, or indifferent for any number. So it might help someone, it might hurt someone else. Long and short of that, we're looking for them to tell us what they need. In the meantime, Deputy Chief of Staff to the Secretary of Transportation reached out to me through Representative Peak immediately on Wednesday when we were able to connect, and he has since redirected me to Bill Travers, as you may know, as the District 5 engineer. He's got a number of questions that he's asked me, but they're very much in a mode of working with us to answer that. So the short answer is, I'm having ongoing discussions with the Department of Transportation, but we will be reaching out, and again, this is more workable if you remand this process to staff to expedite, but we'll be reaching back out to them, saying, do you need, I don't want to use examples, because that's unfair to them, but any establishment on Route 28, if you need to use the sidewalk, we may be able to impact on the roadway.
Thank you. The reason I brought that up was primarily to get that out there. That third box is not a deal killer. That's an ongoing discussion, and if you want to avail yourself of that, because the other unsaid thing is, the indoor opening is not going to be at full capacity. We all know that.
Correct.
So to the extent we can get both the indoor and some sort of outdoor seating to try to help these folks out, that would be terrific, but don't not fill out the form, because that third box intimidates you, because there's a roadway involved. Just tell us that there's a roadway involved, and there is a process that we're working through.
Joe?
Thank you. And following up on that, and based on my recommendation, so what you'll see in the packet And following up on that, and based on my recommendation, so what you'll see in the approval process is, I've incorporated what I would consider to be an immediate appeal process. I don't see a situation that would cause me or staff to reject a request, but I wanted to build in that, that if staff is doing it rather than the board, there's an immediate appeal process, if you will. In addition to that, let me just rely on my notes here.
Joe, while you're looking at that, process-wise, if I have a restaurant on wherever, 28, and do I submit Phase One of outdoor seating without any road closure, then Phase Two, so I can at least get started, and what happens with road closure?
Absolutely.
So you can approve the first one, then you can come back to?
Absolutely, yeah. This is not meant to be a staff situation.
All or nothing.
Exactly, absolutely. And again, I'm drawing upon you all being unanimous and consistent in saying, whatever we can do to support these businesses. The other thing I wanted to bring to light is, right now, as I mentioned, there are 15 establishments that have notified us in time for the meeting notice for Monday. We don't know yet how many of those have met the bare minimum requirements for the agenda, for the board's consideration. So, you know, there's an argument and an element there for staff doing this to expedite. Were you to go with my recommendation, I'm still utilizing your agenda materials Monday to include in the packet any and all materials of any establishments that would have been approved by staff. So the board will still get all of the documentation that's required. So if Monday night, I don't want you to think that Monday night turns into a useless event if those 15 establishments are already taken care of. We'll leverage that to update the board and the general population.
Okay.
So we'll still be utilizing that.
And Ed, you had a question?
Yeah. On the guidelines, the last guideline, seven, says preferred are outdoor areas where alcohol is served to patrons who are seated at the tables and where food is also available. Well, if food's not available, that's in my mind, the bar, and bars aren't allowed until Phase Four.
Joe, let me let Megan respond to this, if you will, because that question came up at the discussion.
So before Megan weighs in, I'd just like to say, so the reference there, and again, this is a document that has been in use for years, but preferred are outdoor areas. So when they were writing this in 2015, that was the mindset. The guidance and directive that we've got from the ABCC is, because it's a preference, they'll defer to the local municipality, the local licensing authority on that. So it is possible that somebody could be outside and only get alcohol service rather than food service. But if there is any pure bar that's serving alcohol only, we would still have to vet that through council. But our understanding is all the establishments are, because they've asked the question, if a customer comes in, do they have to have food? The answer is no. That help?
They do have to be seated, though.
Thank you, they do have to be seated, correct.
You can't, there's no standing around, or standing bars allowed in Phase Two. So bars, bars are closed, like you said, Ed, but if you're a restaurant that serves food and drinks, you can sit at a table and just order drinks, you don't have to order food.
But you can't sit at the bar, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Correct. I've heard the talk.
I think that's what Ed was getting at, he's.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just out of curiosity, I can't recall, do we have any licensed pure bar that has no food involvement at all that we're talking about in any of this?
I don't think we do, do we?
The Irish pub or something?
No, that's, that serves food.
Did they? Oh, I didn't realize that.
So I don't recall us having issued a bar license where there's no food, and it's a pouring license. So I mean, this is just an academic question.
Michael, do you have a question?
As it relates to road closure, Route 28, I'd suggest that somebody call the Town of Chatham, as that's the route that they run their ambulances to the hospital, and ask what the impact will be. I would imagine that would be a fairly significant impact. We did get a few complaints, or I got a few complaints, of people that thought closing Route 28 was a really bad idea. So as long as, I know we're not there yet, so if we could just vet those things. Insurance requirement, I imagine that the Town of Harwich will take on some sort of liability by permitting close to a street or on a sidewalk. Have we asked our insurance company if there's anything additionally that we have to do? And are we going to require the applicants to just get a letter from their insurance company saying that they are in fact insured for the additional space? And I'm not trying to bog this down, these are just some things that came up.
Absolutely. We have not, but we are working with my counsel on questions like that, absolutely.
The question was just asked and answered on the alcohol. I guess to go a little further with that, is there a time, you know, most of these restaurants stop serving at nine, some of them 10 o'clock, I believe, is there a time now, because this is allowed to be, sit down and have drinks only outside? Are we, the board, thinking that we allow this to go on until the 12 o'clock curfew on the outdoor entertainment? Or are we, are we going to leave it open, or is there a time that matters?
That's a, that's a great question, because I'm uncomfortable giving indoor entertainment timelines to outdoors, because we know we're going to have complaints with this no matter what we do. And so I would, you know, we have outdoor entertainment timelines now for some places. I don't see why we wouldn't stick with that uniformly.
And if I may, to that issue, we have not expressly addressed yet, outdoor entertainment in these expanded areas. And that's quite simply because we wanted to get this process moving. That is going to be a bog point, but we are aware of that. And as far as hours of operation for alcohol service, the notice on your agenda for Monday is complete enough that we could have that discussion more formally if the board operating as local licensing authority wants to put any structure around that.
I just think for public notice, if the applicants added to their application or the checklist, or what they have to give you added what their hours of operation are proposed. Reiterate my point from the beginning, I want to do everything I can do to help the local businesses, but I think that we also have to take into account some of the neighbors and make sure that at least we're advertising things correctly, and that there is a, that there's a time, there should be a time slot on them. And with that, I guess I would go right to, how do we intend to monitor this? So if we approve a business for six tables, eight tables, 10 tables, whatever the amount of tables are, what are we going to do to monitor and make sure that they comply? And is there going to be a punishment? And again, this is for the public, it's asking questions at this point. It's not for the board not being pro-business, because I think we all very much are. But people in the public are asking questions, and they just want to have it a little more clearly defined.
And, go ahead, Joe, and that question came up this morning as well.
Sure, absolutely. First of all, it's an excellent question, and the short answer is that there's nothing in any of this where the local licensing authority surrenders any of its rights, rules, and responsibilities. That's why the two-scale plan is critical, because we need to understand, what are they envisioning for their premises, if you will? And so that's why both parties need to be very clear on that, where if you said you were going to use the four spaces in front of your establishment, and we see where those four spaces are, and somebody's drinking on the other side, that's no different than taking an alcoholic beverage out to the street and drinking outside of an establishment. And that would be a violation, that would cause a hearing and everything else. And as far as monitoring, I would suggest that we would continue to do that, as we've always done it, obviously being more sensitive to where we're at, but that's why those questions are important and excellent. None of this, even though we're expediting an approval process, we're doing nothing to waive any of the rights and regulations of the town. And so we can incorporate that language, unless the board thinks otherwise.
Joe, as this came up this morning, if the Board of Health, maybe Megan can weigh in too, on the certification, the policy, walk through that process, might help.
Sure. Megan, did you hear that?
I did. All businesses, regardless of what type of business they are, so restaurants, retail spaces, even municipal governments are required to meet mandatory workplace safety standards, and those standards are for social distancing, hand hygiene, staffing, and training, and cleaning and disinfecting. And part of those standards requires all owners of businesses to self-certify, that they are meeting all of those standards. And they're supposed to post something, or have something available upon request, saying that they have met all of those standards. They're similar to the ones you're seeing on the screen. These are specific to restaurants, but they're very similar for general business as far as designating training, and how, what happens if someone's sick, and what to do, and that face coverings are required, and things like that, and cleaning and disinfecting. So there is a self-certification step that the state's requiring for all businesses.
I think with that, and Joe, your comments, it's kind of a two-phased approach, to be sure. Michael, your question, hopefully that we do have a way to enforce it and keep people in line.
Thinking ahead.
Absolutely.
And, excuse me, Ed had, and then Don, I get to you, I think Ed had a question.
I guess the question on hours of operation, a number of places that serve are open until midnight or 1:00, I'm not sure which, what's the actual closing hour here, but close the kitchen at 9:00. Do we want these places then, from 9:00 to 12:00, to basically outside, just basically function like a bar, where food isn't available?
Yeah, if I could just comment, I think we do need to be concerned about that, because, you know, the people that kind of stay later in the bars, they're inside, and today, we don't hear that that much. But like Michael pointed out, it could create a real issue for the neighbors. You know, because there is a late-night crowd, no question about it, and, you know, we don't want to discourage the business, but we're also going to have to worry about, you know, folks who normally would be inside, sitting at the bar, talking loudly to their friends, having a great time, are now going to be outside. And, you know, especially in the Harwichport area, there's an awful lot of people that are, you know, going to hear that.
I'm a little more reluctant to take that step at this point, but I take your points. But Don?
Actually, I was going to say something to that point. Walking into the room, what we were, the endeavor was really redefining the premises that you had. That's all we were really doing. The rules and regulations of the license were 1:00, and routinely inside, I understand what Stephen's saying, but routinely inside, that's what's been going on. They close the kitchen, they still serve alcohol. And part of this bleeds over to what Michael was saying earlier, too, about the insurance. Everybody has a pouring license, they better understand that when they expand, the license is tethered to the premises. You have to have a site plan or something that functions as that for approval of a pouring license. So understanding that, I mean, what we're really doing is redefining what the serving area is. They better have insurance themselves, because the liability, I don't care whose property they're using, is still theirs, because by definition, it's the premises that they're pouring on. And I'm not as disturbed, the noise I would be, but I'm not as disturbed about that. If the endeavor here is to just quickly make a mass conversion, then if we start messing around with changing times, changing what?
If I could, I, that was not my suggestion.
Well, I didn't think it was, but I'm just saying, overall, for what we're doing.
I'm just saying, we need to be cognizant of that, and, you know, there's going to be some enforcement issues, I'm sure, because, you know, you know, people, when they're having a good time, they don't realize how loud they are, you know? And so I just think that the establishments are going to make, need to make sure that they're cognizant of the noise that's coming from the outside gathering. That's all I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not suggesting we close anything, or, you know.
And I didn't think you were, Mr. Chair, but the problem that I see is that ultimately, everybody has got to understand, they've got to give a little here.
Yeah.
Even the residents in the area, the fact that the town is as vibrant as it's been, the meals tax revenue that we derive from the vibrancy of the businesses being around, the people who work there, who actually live in the community, or even own there, or in the community, who recycle what they're getting as the revenues back into the community, this is holistic. And if somebody is a neighbor that's kind of turned off by that, they should be imagining a town that has absolutely nothing going on in the center of it, and that was what Dennisport looked like for almost a generation. It's very difficult to come back from something like that. Everybody needs to give everybody else a little bit of a break here, so that we can move forward in a very difficult circumstance.
Joe?
Just one last point on all of this. As I mentioned, we had about 30 establishments of the 60 or so that we're aware of, that participated in the call. As I mentioned, 16 of them, 15 yesterday, indicated a desire to expand their outdoor table service. But I also want the board to know that, I know I have, and I think Megan may have as well, but have reached out to some of the businesses that did not participate, and just inquire if they were aware of it. And their response was that they would prefer to remain takeout until indoor, because they just don't have the staff or the capacity to go to that. So, you know, we're going to see all sort of variations on this, I think.
Michael?
I appreciate that. I've talked to several business owners, and they say they're going to just continue to do what they're doing, because it doesn't make any sense to do anything different. I'm not trying to bog the board down with a time. I do want to clarify, because we all got an email this week, well, maybe we didn't all get it, but we got, I got an email this week, is the shutdown on serving alcohol 12:00, or is it in fact 1:00? I know our police chief expressed that he wanted it to be 12:00.
Yeah, I did.
And I know that we had this conversation as it pertained to licenses being issued, but I don't believe we've ever made an actual decision on it.
The state is one.
I know what the state is, but I believe, Don, in several of our conversations last year, we talked about 12:00, and the police chief stood before us when the noise thing was going on, and said he wished it was 12:00. So can we see if there was a vote taken by the board? And is it 12:00 or is it 1:00? As far as the table service for alcohol goes, we do have to do as much as we can do for these businesses, and I think the applications, Joe, are going to be a one, a one-by-one, and a one-on-one, and we're going to have to look at different areas. I mean, in Harwichport, the residents in Harwichport are going to get a break, because there's not going to be any entertainment, and the bars aren't going to be packed. So there's going to be less noise in Harwichport, regardless of what time we shut the tables down. In Harwich Center, there's never really been any outdoor bar activity, and I imagine South Harwich, there's never been any outdoor bar activity. So I guess we can see how it goes, and if we make a rule, we can have another meeting and change a rule.
Excuse me, Michael, go ahead.
All right. That was it. As far as the, the only thing that, last question I had was related to Joe's request or recommendation. And the only thing I'll say about that is, I don't want to make more work for myself, and I'm happy for you to do it. I would only ask that, as we open this town, and we're opening Town Hall, and as we're starting to talk to unions, and as we're talking to employees, and as we're creating 112 budgets, do you have the time for this?
So, today through next week, yes. Simply because of the procedures that Megan and I have worked on all week. The hope is, we can get as many done through next week as possible. Whether it's me or other staff, we, we in the administration department have to receive it anyway, and we would be redirecting to key staff members to say, this is the proposal, weigh in, and I'll render a decision, and then advise the board, or weigh in, I'll make a recommendation to the board for a decision. So either way, we're going to impact upon staff, we're going to impact upon the board, and it's certainly going to impact upon me. But the hope was, with this process right now, within the next week, to have the greatest impact as quickly as we can.
Follow-up. So I would support that. Joe's seeing them before us, and with the ca- Joe's seeing him before us, and with the caveat that, you know, a lot of these business owners are extremely stressed out. They have, they've been closed, they're struggling with takeout, and they really need to open to stay in business. If there is a difference in opinion, I guess, and with the strength, the strong feeling of this board that we want to help restaurants, and that we want to help all businesses, I would ask that you come back to us, even if we have to have another meeting. And I'm not trying to create our schedule any more than it's already created, but if you could just, I know the immediate appeals process, but as immediate as we can make it, or grant them something and say, then appeal.
Yes.
You know, a partial grant.
If I may on that one, Mr. Chairman, I would be willing, based on that, if the board said that any objections by staff notwithstanding, the establishment would be approved, and it would go back to the board, so that the board's aware of the issue. So we could either do the immediate appeal, which is somewhat of a misnomer, because it would take at least 48 hours, 48 business hours' notice for a board meeting.
Yeah.
Or some other mechanism. Either way, the intent is the same, so I would be willing to defer to anything the board does.
Last follow-up, I promise, sorry, Ed. Last thing that would be important to me is, as these plans get submitted, the board is often asked questions from, and will have to ask questions. So whether it's weekly or bi-weekly, if those plans and what is approved can go into a drop box, so that we can see the plans and be able to answer questions if residents ask, that would be important to me. Thank you.
As they're submitted, basically, after the process, not at one time. Ed?
Yeah, just, and Don's aware of this, to point out that in the past, when we would have granting seasonal licenses occasionally, one or another of our establishments wouldn't get it all together in time to be able to open on Memorial Day, oftentimes were the Friday afternoon emergency meeting to get somebody open in time. And I think we're all willing to do that.
Did it with the port.
And again, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if the board is willing to go with my recommendation and to previous points, we've already have, we already have it lined up in administration. We've got 30-plus folders. So as we get documentation, the 15 establishments, you will have as many documents related to those establishments as were accepted in your packet this evening, from Monday and going forward. So that will always be the standard operating procedure.
Thank you, Joe. For what it's worth, Joe inferred it in his opening remarks, but at the meeting, I, at the meeting that Megan and Joe, my comment on that was reminding restaurant owners that they needed to work with us, and not just illegal, you know, to layer the law, but in the spirit of the law, of the regulation. And we were nervous about the noise, more outdoor seating, and we were, we were at the very least going to keep track of that. And so at least, I made that statement, so we'll see. My guess is, most of them, if not all, will be very careful, because they want to stay We'll see. Do we need a motion on this, Joe, or...
The board must approve an approval process.
Michael, is that your intent now, or...
Yes. I move that we approve the approval process and the town administrator's recommendation for the applications to go through town administrator.
Okay. Is there a second? Is there any further discussion? Before we vote, let me open it up to those that are participating on the go-to meeting, to see if anyone, is that okay with you, Scott?
Scott, have we heard if anyone's in the queue for public input?
Yeah, I'm just checking that now, one second. No one in the email queue, huh?
Okay. Michael?
I just want to make one comment, a closing comment, that, you know, I have, and I believe Stephen did as well, talked to other towns and see what other towns are doing. I feel like the town of Harwich is very far ahead, and this board is supporting our businesses, and I hope that the businesses at least appreciate that. But I do feel like we are way ahead of other people, and our streamlined process allows for people to open quickly. Some other processes have been created that are going to be a lot more paperwork for their businesses in other towns. So I'm thankful that this came forward, and I'm thankful that we can vote on it, and I hope the businesses thrive.
Good. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Joe, can I?
Cindy, let Don finish his statement, then, yeah, we have a voice from God here.
Voice from above. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to expand on what Michael had said earlier, and where we're at right now. There's been a heck of a lot of stuff that's, I don't, I mean, I've been involved with town government since 1995. I don't know that I've ever seen the succession of events that we found ourselves in, starting with a tornado. The only thing we haven't had is a zombie apocalypse, but the tornado, the budget that was, started out really upside down, the pandemic, both the health side and the economic side, and then having on our, on the wing, come up with regulations here. I personally want to thank, because that was the question, is if Joe had enough time on his, in his schedule to be able to pull all this off. So far, he's been able to pull off an awful lot, and I appreciate that, and I'm pretty sure all the members of the board do, because this, I mean, we're reinventing things on the fly.
You're correct. Cindy?
I just wanted to mirror what Michael and what Don just said as well. The businesses are extremely appreciative of what Megan and Joe have been doing, what we did this week as a collective group. Larry, you were on that meeting as well. They're all eager to get everything done, and I think having the three of us work together to help them get that, and then with the support of all five of you, it's truly appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you all. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
If there's no further business out there, Joe? You're not going to let us go, are you?
I apologize, I don't want to impede progress of getting out of here. But I do want to emphasize that, by, and to what Selectman McCaskill said just a moment ago, by the board taking this action, it is entirely conceivable that we could have establishments in the town of Harwich as early as Monday, June 8th, in accordance with the governor's directive, to be open for outdoor table service. And I think that's a remarkable testament to the direction of the board and staff working as one to get that done. I think you all should be very proud of what you've done today.
Thank you.
Okay?
Before I make the motion to adjourn on Selectman's report, if I could, if I could just ask if we could get an update on when we can open the cultural center. Several questions, I think the social distancing that goes on in the cultural center, there's plenty of space in there, and I think people are anxious to get back in, and I'd hate to lose revenue out of that building if we don't have to. So if we could just get an update on that. And with that, I'd make a motion we adjourn. Second?
Second. I assume no discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for taking the Friday timeout.